The Wood County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd ask the clerk to take the role, and I believe he has done so. And at this time, I would call on Supervisor Joe Zurflue to please come forward for the invocation. I'd ask her by the de rise and standing up by allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will you bow your head now as I pray? Dear wise and loving Father, thank you on behalf of all gathered here this morning. Thank you for the many and abundant blessings that you have bestowed upon us. In the scriptures, you have said citizens ought to obey governing authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for County Board Chairman Lance Plemmle, for the various levels of county officials, and in particular, this assembled group of County Board Supervisors. I ask you, Father, to grant them wisdom to govern amid conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of welfare and true needs of our residents, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give them an assurance of what pleases you, Father, and what benefits those who live and work in our beloved Wood County. It is in your blessed name, I pray. Amen.
He's doing the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisors. All right, we need a motion to accept place of followings to previous meeting. A motion by Bride, seconded by LaFontaine. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. We have no excusals today. Under resignations, we have two today. Resignation of Leland Cow and Randall Dormars from the Civil Service Commission. I entertain a motion to accept those resignations. By LaFontaine, seconded by Zurflue. Any discussion? Again, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 And opposed? And that motion carries. Under appointments, like to do the following. We have three of these to the Civil Service Commission on a five-year term. Michael Myers. For the term ending 1/1/2024, Robert Laduduski. And for the term ending 1/1/2025, Gus Van Cuso. And look for motions to the act. Motion by Lightnum, seconded by Zurflue. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye, please.
Aye.
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 And opposed? And that motion carries. Do we have... Congratulations to those appointees and reappointees. Do we have any public comment today? Any public comment? No public comment. We are a really quiet group today, too. Acknowledgement and recognitions. We have one today, and it's a long-term employee of Mentor Kyle. Are you going to do that? If you would move forward. Yeah, please come out to the podium if you would.
Morning, everyone. Happy holidays. Today, I get to recognize one of our long-term CNAs, Donna Sinkstock. Donna has been a CNA at Water Haven for 25 years. And I was thinking today, you know, how many people she has probably cared for over that time. Thousands and thousands of people at Wood County. Donna primarily works on her rehabilitation unit. And one of my favorite reasons that she works on that is because she's one of the most compassionate CNAs I've ever met. And that's the person that people are going to be talking about when they go back out to the community. It's Donna's day off today, so I was not sure if she would come in or not. But I will present the award to her when she works next. And just want to thank her for the time at Wood County and all the time that she will continue to serve with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Appreciate it. All right, moving into the packet. Today, there were some referrals on page five of the packet. Town of Seagulls comprehensive plan update and the book management plan update. Both of those went to the appropriate committees and our people. And then, as we move into the packet with the committee meetings, on page six, you have the Operations Committee, the annual budget hearing on November 9th. Page seven and eight, the Operations Committee meeting of December 7th. Monthly update from the clerk's office on nine and 10. Trent, is there any update you want to give on elections, primary dates, or anything else?
I can talk a little bit, yeah. It looks like we're going to have a February primary in some local municipalities. Right now, this Wisconsin Rapid School District has five candidates running for four positions or two positions. So we need to narrow that down to four people. City of Marshfield, probably with their mayor. Sounds like there's a slew of people running for that. And then, I'm hearing rumblings that maybe the city of Nacusa might have a primary for their mayor, so...
What date is that?
The primary would be February 15th, which would be the February County Board Day. And then, the election is, of course, April 5th.
Thanks. Ben and Trent?
Yep.
Okay. And then, we have an update from the Corp Council on 11 and 12. Update from the Human Resources Department, beginning on page 13, runs through page 17. Any questions there? Monthly report from the Treasurer on 18. And then, there were four resolutions originally in your packet. We've had a late resolution come in. There are five of them here. These are basically all budget amendments with...
You run the fifth one separate.
I'll run it together.
No.
You're going to run them separate.
Run the four together and then the fifth separate? Okay, because you're going to amend it.
Oh, we're going to do it the same way, but that's okay. We'll run the four together. We'll amend the fifth because...
Yeah.
Okay, it'd probably be more understandable. We talked about this earlier. We still can't get it straight. This is a discussion we had downstairs. Trent is going to shoot because I'm going to run them separately. So we have four budget amendments. Supervisor Zurflue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't catch the first part of that. The first four, you're going to run together?
Yes.
And then, the fifth will be taken?
Separately. Correct. Yeah, that was my misunderstanding. We talked about it downstairs, and apparently I wasn't clear up.
I get my hearing aids next to me.
On what we just said. So we have four resolutions here. They're all budget amendments. I ask that... Is there any objection to taking those four together? Supervisor Clendening?
I don't have an objection to taking them together, but... Yeah, I do have some concerns about why some committees think that... Why some committees think they have to have the Operations Committee on this. On their resolutions. I don't think that's what the Operations Committee is there. I know they got the Finance Director there. But I notice that people that are on the Operations Committee and who are chairs make sure that their resolutions go. And I don't think that's necessary. I think a lot of these are a waste of time. I mean, they could come directly to the County Board, just like the important resolution that is going to be on the fifth one now, so... And not that I'm voting against them, it's just the idea that... I don't know why they have to go to the Operations Committee. It's not the old Executive Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. And you are correct, they don't have to. The committees tend to forward them there. The Operations Committee don't ask for them. But you are right, they end up there. So we have the four resolutions. We have no objection to taking those together? All right, Trent, please.
This will be Resolution 21-12-1, to amend the 2021 budget for workers' compensation where expenditures not included in the 2021 budget process. Fiscal note: Transfer of $35,000 from available workers' compensation reserve fund balance. As of December 1st, 2021, the fund balance reserved for workers' compensation was $1,725,466. The adjustment to the budget totals $35,000. Next, page 20. Resolution 21-12-2, to amend the 2021 consolidated grants budget for additional revenue and expenditures unanticipated during the original budget process. Fiscal note: No cost to Wood County. The adjustment to the budget totals $5,800. Resolution 21-12-3, to amend the 2021 public health budget for additional revenue and expenditures unanticipated during the original budget process. Fiscal note: No cost to Wood County. The adjustment to the budget totals $904,590. Resolution 21-12-4, to amend the 2022 transportation and economic development budget for additional rural economic development plan implementation expenditures that were not anticipated during the original budget process. Fiscal note: No additional cost to Wood County. The source of the funding is unspent funds from the 2021 transportation and economic development budget. And that transfer totals $51,075.
Okay, you've heard the remainder of those four resolutions. I have a motion by LaFontaine. I have a second by Bride. Discussion, Donna.
Yeah, thank you.
Supervisor Rosar.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have a follow-up question. I agree with Supervisor Clendening, but I have another question. These are budget resolutions. Why do they even have to go to the committee? Why can't they go just to the Operations Committee? Since the Operations Committee has oversight over the Finance Department and the budget, couldn't they just be introduced to the Operations Committee by the Finance Director since they are budget resolutions and not have to go to the Oversight Committees?
They could, but I think it makes more sense to have the committee. Maybe if they request, they're the ones that know what's going on in that particular departments. And if it's relevant or pertinent. How would the Operations Committee know?
There is no County Board rule, nor has there ever been a County Board rule that says that these budget-mending resolutions have to go to Executive or to Operations. Everybody tossed them there and continue to do so. I don't know if it's good, bad, otherwise people have different opinions on that. But there is no County Board rule that states you have to do that.
And that was Supervisor Clendening's saying. It doesn't need to go there at all.
May I ask a follow-up question, please? Thank you. So is there a County Board rule that says they have to go to the Oversight Committee?
An individual supervisor could introduce it.
No. No.
They have to go through the committee.
Yeah.
Okay. So...
And that Oversight Committee? No, any committee, correct?
Any committee.
Okay.
It can't... A fiscal resolution cannot be run by an individual supervisor. It has to be through a committee.
I think after all these years, I know that, but I appreciate... But to... I guess to clarify for those. Supervisor Clendening is right. It doesn't need to go through the Operations Committee. Donna is right. It wouldn't need to go there. But I think it makes no sense to amend it from the committee, which is making a request. They know what they're looking for and what they want. We're just looking at the financial. All right, any other discussion on those four? Any other discussion? All right, I ask you to please go to the board and vote.
Hamilton, yes?
Knight, you're a yes.
Thank you.
I got it set. Why aren't people voting?
We are, and it says, "Yes, I'm aye."
Says you voted.
Okay, this is scary.
Could raise our hands.
Let me try and clean my resume. What's going on? Well, this is really fortuitous because I have the new voting system down in my office. I was going to run it next month, so that might have been a good timing.
Well, it says on top of our screens, your vote is being cast, waiting for talent.
Yeah. I think everybody has theirs, just not getting the U-trap.
Yeah. I'm on the right network. Because you guys wouldn't be able to sign in if I wasn't. Okay, well...
Can I go to a voice vote?
I think we're going to have to do a voice vote on this. Yep.
All right. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. Those four resolutions are adopted. Supervisor Clendening?
Just for clarity, so... I see Valentin is absent. It says abstinence, and you said there was no excusals? When you made that, is that what you meant? She's not excused?
No, Supervisor Valentin is excused. She's deployed to the defense of our country, so that was a misstatement by me at the time. Because I was up there and auditionally was what I meant, but you are correct. Thank you. All right, moving ahead, page 22A in your packet. This was a late resolution. Trent?
This will be Resolution 21-12-5, to amend the 2021 budget for Norwood Maintenance Function for the purpose of funding the capital purchase necessary to replace the failed nurse call light system. Fiscal note: Transfer $57,000 from available balance and contingency to Norwood Maintenance Function. At the time of this request, the funds available in contingency are $600,000. The adjustment to the budget totals $57,000.
Okay, do we have a motion and a second? Do we have a motion by Rosar? Second by Fire?
Okay.
Yeah?
All right, I would like to just speak to this a little bit. This came before the Health and Human Services Committee, and I'm very supportive of this. But Chairwoman Rosar stated at the last meeting of Health and Human Services that this might be a good use for ARCA funding. And I agree with that. So I would actually like to amend this resolution to state in the "Therefore Be Resolved" section, to read as follows. Therefore be resolved to amend the 2021 Wood County Budget to transfer $57,000 from the contingency account for the use of ARCA funding, whichever is more advantageous to the county, to the Norwood Maintenance Function.
We have an amendment that's been offered. Do I have a second to that amendment? Supervisor Rosar? Okay, we have an amendment on the floor that allows some flexibility with the funding for this. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment? All right, all in... Do you think this is going to work, Trent?
Oh, hell, no. No, just...
All right, all in favor, the amendment, signify by aye.
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 Opposed? All right, so we have the resolution now as amended. Discussion on the resolution as amended. Any discussion on the resolution as amended? Supervisor Clendening?
Yeah. I have not necessarily conducted something on the amendment or the motion, but... I wish somebody would get up and tell the public exactly why this is. Because they don't know what... When I was at the meeting. But I'm just surprised about how this is and being chairman of the JNL Committee and the Rules Committee. I see we have to go over some rules. I remember one time when I and another supervisor for a particular committee went on a Thursday and tried to get something in the packet for Thursday for the County Board on Tuesday. And we were told we're 10 minutes late. We were told we were 10 minutes late and it could not go on then. There was no way we could do it. And it did come from the JNL Committee. Here, I just think... I just think of what happened. I think it's very important that this resolution passes so we can have our nurses doing what they're supposed to be doing in the safety of all that. But I... I say staff has to know what the rules and regulations are. And this resolution came so quickly to that meeting, which was a meeting which would have been out Thursday after the County Board. This was a Thursday before the County Board. So the resolutions did get in. That's probably why this is all messed up here. Did get in the packet, which is very unusual to do, so... First of all, I would like somebody to get up and explain why this resolution is so important.
Oh, I can do that, and then who can explain the rules?
Honestly, rules, there is a rule, if you're already Supervisor Clendening, that allows for late resolutions to be forwarded to the County Board as long as they're received by the clerk's office on Friday before. You already have a rule in the rulebook. So that's how the late resolution arrived. What happened 15 years ago, I can't answer that. But there is already a rule in the rulebook that allows for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Supervisor Rosar, could you explain the need for this resolution?
Yes, so I'd like to explain why we had our Health and Human Services Committee meeting on the third Thursday instead of the fourth Thursday. Because Christmas is on Saturday, and Christmas Eve is on Friday. And so the committee decided to have our meeting a week early. And it does cause for issues when you have a Health and Human Services or any committee within days of when the County Board... So about... And I think Marissa is on, so she can correct me if I misspeak. But my understanding is, is that about 10 days ago, they started having trouble with the nurse call light system. If any of y'all have been in the hospital, or you know you have a little button that you call if you're in trouble or you need a nurse in a patient room. And so that system was failing. They did everything that they could to fix it. They even tried to use parts from Edgewater Haven that had been replaced, and they tried to cobble something together. It did not work. And about maybe the Tuesday or Wednesday before our Health and Human Services Committee, they decided that the system was non-functional, and we needed to address it. So it was talked about in the Health and Human Services Committee. We worked with Trent to get the resolution in the packet, sent it out to the County Board Supervisors because the resolution was not in the packet. And it's deemed to be an emergency situation because it takes several weeks and maybe months. I think Marissa said two or three months to get this ordered and in place. And right now, patients are ringing bells to get the nurses and the CNAs, and they're increasing their rounds so that they can anticipate residents' needs before a critical event happens. This would be a citable issue because the residents have no way of ringing a bell, ringing the call light system. But if you can show that you have a plan in place to correct the deficiency, then you don't get a ticket. And so that's kind of... Oh, I... Ticket's not... Citation, I think is. I've been stopped enough times to get tickets. I know exactly the terminology. So a citation to that you're... That's a health and safety issue. So that's kind of where we are. We did talk with Supervisor Clendening, who attended our meeting, that we believe that there should be some rule in place that allows for the expenditure of some funds for emergency purposes without having perhaps wait for a County Board meeting or something. And Supervisor Town, I talked about that a little bit this morning, about what we thought the parameters might be for that. But there are emergency situations that need pretty prompt attention. So hopefully, the JNL Committee will work on some language that we can consider for that. So if that answers your question, I'll be glad to expound further if necessary.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All right, all in favor of that resolution, please signify by aye.
Let's try.
Aye.
Try and vote, I think. Let's try the board.
Let's try the board, just for fun. Well, that wasn't fun.
All right, that was a lot of fun.
That was fun.
All right, let's go back to the voice vote. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. All right, moving along, page 23 in your packet, Resolution 1-5.
This will be Resolution 21-12-6, to write off verified uncollectible balances of Edgewater Haven's accounts receivable. Fiscal note: There will be no fiscal impact to Edgewater Haven or the County General Fund as the write-off adjustment entry will occur in non-financial sheet accounts. And that adjustment totals $69,056.92.
Motion by Clendening. And a second by Lightnum. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion? All right, again, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. That resolution is adopted. Page 24 in your packet.
This will be Resolution 21-12-7, to increase the budgeted FTEs for the Health Department by creating a .63 FTE community health worker position. Fiscal note: No cost to Wood County.
Motion by Fire. Second by Bride. Any discussion on this resolution? Any discussion? All right, again, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, and that resolution is adopted as well. All right, moving back to the packet, page 25 and 26. Minutes of the Health and Human Services Committee of November 18th. The North Central Community Action Board on October 11th, on 27, 28, and 29. You have an update from the Health Department, beginning on page 30 and running through page 34. Page 30 through 34. I don't know if I mentioned... But I had a meeting the other day with some of the superintendents, some of the business leaders in town, and they were extremely complimentary of the cooperation and the work being done with our Health Department. So to you and your department, congratulations on that. That's not always easy to make all those people happy at once. All right, the Wood County Human Services Department, their monthly report, beginning on page 35, and it runs through page 43. Beginning with Director Ruhmings, 35. Supervisor Winch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to motivate 32 and under that category, I don't know, less. Yes, they listed it at 21. I think that should be 18. Have we remembered being 18?
Supervisor, are you picking up on that?
Well, yeah, I think I'm going to let Sue... Is Sue still here? And he's talking about this National Provincial Alliance of Central Wisconsin, and Wisconsin men's, the 21 age for the purchase of tobacco products. What is the status and the discussion of that?
As far as...
As far as...
Like the age specifically? They're still talking about...
Come to the mic.
They are still talking about age 21 for purchase of tobacco products? Yeah. Is there...
It's 18, though, right?
It's 18.
It's currently 18.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is currently 18.
And why are they listing that at 21?
What page is that on?
It's on page 32.
All 32.
Yeah, it's just under... It's just that discussion about that program to update age to 21.
Talks about compliance checks and other things, and then mentions the age of 21.
Oh. Yeah, so I know there is a group discussing increasing it to age 21, which obviously we're not supportive of. So I'm wondering if she just accidentally put that in there. Her and I were discussing that initiative as well and how to advocate against increasing the age. Obviously, that's not the direction we want to go, so I think it's probably a typo. Yep.
So to clarify, it is 18 is the age?
Yes.
And we don't want to go backwards.
It was under discussion by some groups, exactly.
And it's 18?
It is 18.
Yep.
So you can swoon.
Sorry about that.
All right, taxes of the Human Services Department report 35 to 43. 35 to 43. The Veteran Service Officers report on 44 and 45. Minutes of the Wood County Public Safety Committee from November 8th, beginning on 46. Then 7, 8, and 9. Questions there? Their meeting from November 30th, on page 50. A memo update here from the Pittsville Fire Department Chief Miner on 51. The Humane Officers reports, beginning on 52, and they run through page 56. You got a whole bunch of them here. The monthly... The October monthly report from the Sheriff's Department, beginning with Sheriff Rescue, begin on page 57, and that runs through page 80, 57 through 80. Anybody have any questions there? Takes us to page 81 in your packet, which is another resolution. This one from the Public Safety Committee.
This will be Resolution 21-12-8, to adjust the per diem rate for the coroner for the next term of office, restate the per diem amounts for deputy coroners, and adjust certain charges of the coroner. Fiscal note: No anticipated increase to the tax levy as the increased call-out pay for the coroner should be covered by the increase in fees.
Motion by Zurflue, seconded by Fire. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All right, all in favor, again, signify by aye.
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 Opposed? Again, that motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Moving back to the packet, page 82. Begins the Minutes of the Seat Committee from November 3rd. 82 through 86. Page 82 through 86. The same committee, their Minutes of December 1st, begin on 88 and run through page 94. Through 94. Golden Sands Resources Conservation Development Council, various minutes of theirs and their various committees, beginning on 95 and running through page 102. 95 through 102. There's a report here from the ITPEC Board, beginning on 103, it runs through 105. And I think the one important note there is Jeff Anderson from the Department of Tourism has been very helpful in trying to garner some funding for the groundwater up in Marsfield. And he's been texting me, emailing me, and calling me every few days with additional options where we may be able to fund that with dollars other than county or city dollars. So they're working pretty hard on that project. And hopefully, it does, because that's an iconic piece of history located in our fairgrounds. Moving over to page 106, Census and Review Redistricting Committee, their November 2nd meeting. Page 107, their November 9th meeting. And I'll, again, make a comment there. There are a number of counties that are nowhere near where they should be on the deviation between the size of, you know, districts within their county and that they've adopted. I think our committee, our office there under Jason's actually did an outstanding job. I think we were about 2.9% on our largest deviation. So amazing when I got something at our 16, 17% and out of compliance with statutes. So good job there, guys. Wood County Land Information Council Minutes on 108 and 109. Report from UW Extension, beginning on 110 and running through 113. Land and Water Conservation Department, their report begins on 114 and runs through 118. Planning and Zoning, their monthly reports, beginning on 119 and run through 124. Then you have a draft concept from Ray Bosser. Those Administrator Board Edwards, begins on page 125 and 140. Some information there. We go to page 141, you have the Citizen Groundwater Group, begins on 141, goes to page 144. Pages 145 through 147 are in relation to the resolution that we see on page 148, which is brought forth by the Seat Committee. Trent, if you'd please read the resolution.
This will be Resolution 21-12-9 to approve a zoning amendment to the Thomas Seagull official zoning map. Fiscal note, none.
Motion by Zerflu. I'm trying to think of who I got, probably for my second, Curry. Everybody's hands going up, but one's still hard without the word out there. Is there any discussion on this one? Any discussion? All right, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, page 149, another resolution from the Seat.
This will be Resolution 21-12-10 to seek county board approval of the 2022 to 24 Wood County Land Information Plan Meeting, meeting Wisconsin Land Information Program eligibility requirements necessary for receiving grants and retaining real estate document recording and filing fees that are charged and collected in the Register of Deeds Office. Deep breath, fiscal note, no cost to Wood County, approximately $151,000 in revenue annually.
Motion by Clendenning, second by LaFontaine. And the plan is behind there on pages 150, 174. Any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion? Get all in favor, signify by aye.
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 And opposed? And again, resolution passes unanimously. Moving to page 184 in your packet, that's after the plan. Supervisor Rafferty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see on page 181, they have something in about the Sand Hill game fence. And the DNR wants to tear it down, but the chronic wasting disease involved with there. And our people want to keep it up. We have the meat wildlife area north of me, and we can do everything they do at the Sand Hill without a fence. The birds come in, and the birds fly out. We have, I, I see with our people, we've got some people do a lot of walking, and they're going to the meat wildlife area before they're going to our trails because they're marked better, they have rest areas. And this area, we, we aren't taking care of our trails. We have like a two-mile trail, there is no rest area for the people to sit down where they have at the meat. And so rather than to put money into a fence, which has really no purpose of it, why not spend some of this money and update our trails that they can walk, people can enjoy walking in the waterfonded trails instead of going to Marasagony? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Rafferty. All right, page 181, in your packet, he gives the Minutes of the Judicial and Legislative Committee. 181, 182, and 183. Page 184 is the same committee, their meeting of November 29th. The J and L Committee's meeting of December 3rd on 185, 186, and 187. Then we go to the Child Support Agency, Director Ruins, report on page 188. Corp Counsel's monthly report on 189, 190. Judicial report from Corp Counsel Castor-Holz on 191. Are any questions on any of those reports? Victim Witness Services report on 192. We have notice of injury and claim, beginning on 193 and running through 199. 193 through 199. And then we have a resolution brought forth by the Judicial and Legislative Committee. The resolution runs from pages 200 to 203, and there's accompanying information from pages 204 to 217.
This will be Resolution 21-12-11 to authorize and direct County Board Chairman Plimmel to enter into the settlement agreements with McKesson Corporation, Cardinal Health Incorporated, AmerisourceBergen Corporation, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Janssen Pharmaceuticals Incorporated, Ortho McNeil Janssen Pharmaceuticals Incorporated, and Janssen Pharmamutica Incorporated to execute the MOU allocating settlement proceeds and the MOU with the Attorney General. Fiscal note, up to 2.3 million in settlement funds minus legal fees received over an 18-year period.
Motion by Bri, second by Clendenning. Is there any discussion, Supervisor Roser?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question about this 18-year period. Was that a negotiated thing that you get the money over 18 years? That just seemed a little long to me, but I just was kind of wondering how that came about.
If it was negotiated, we would certainly like to have it all at once.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All right, seen, all in favor, please signify by aye.
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 Opposed? And again, that resolution passes unanimously. Moving forward on this, I can tell you this, this has been an ongoing process for years. Wisconsin led the way on this, this is a national settlement. The settlement with Wisconsin is much better than any other state. And the fact that 70% of the money is going directly to the counties as opposed to the state for their distribution of funds is also probably the best deal that's been struck anywhere in the country. So this is a, it's a win-win, it's money we didn't expect to get necessarily to begin with. And this is about one-third of the total process we're in from a legal scheme. Supervisor Roser.
Thank you. Thank you. So I have a question about the 70% that we're the counties getting. Are there going to be specifications for how the county spends that money that they get at the local level? Or is there going to be some degree of flexibility for use? And who's going to decide that flexibility?
It's pretty specific in what it needs to use for. And I assume that within those guidelines, your committee is where that would start, the Health and Human Services Committee. But it is for, you know, use in opioid prevention measures, moving forward and how we deal with that, you know, into the future. Now, those rules may change a little bit as we move forward. They tend to become more flexible, but that is the attempt. All right, any other questions there? All right, let's move forward, page 218 in your packet. Is Minutes of the Highway Infrastructure and Recreation Committee, their meeting from November 4th. It's 218 to 220. Their Minutes from November 29th to 21. The HERC Committee Minutes of December 3rd, 22, 23, and 224. The update from the Highway Commissioner, beginning on 225 and runs through page 229. And another one, there, there's going to be another large sum of money coming forward to counties eventually based on the infrastructure bill. And we're going to have to figure out where that gets spent best as we move forward as well. That's 225 to 229. Their report, Park and Forest Street Department report, beginning with Director Schoolies at 230, runs through 236, 230 to 236. And then that brings us to the first resolution from the Act Committee on page 237.
This will be Resolution 21-12-12 to amend the 2021 budget of various highway functions listed below for additional expenditures of $447,487 not anticipated during the original budget process. Fiscal note, no additional cost to Wood County.
Motion by LaFontaine, second by Bri. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Opposed? Again, motion carries, that resolution is adopted unanimously. Page 238 in your packet, second resolution from the HERC Committee.
This will be Resolution 21-12-13 to become eligible for the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant administered through the Federal Emergency and Management Agency. Grant application would be for the construction of a storm shelter at Southwood County Park in the Red Sands Beach area. Fiscal note, construction cost estimates are $715,500.
I have a motion by Clendenning. I have a second by Han. But I know there's been some further information that's come to light here, and Jacob, I recognize you.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. I think indefinitely postpone this, chance working on a state grant with the lower co-pay and a higher chance of receiving. Thank you.
So the motion to indefinitely postpone is a privileged motion. We've come up with a funding source that cuts the county contribution in half. And that's why they wanted indefinitely postponed. So I have a motion to indefinitely postpone, but I have a second by Clendenning. Sir, any further discussion? Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. And I assume we'll move forward with this, we're just going to do it under a different funding mechanism, which is much more advantageous to the county. Moving forward, page 239 in your packet, another resolution from both HERC and the J and L Committee.
This, this will be Resolution 21-12-14 to oppose the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources decision to depopulate the deer herd within Sand Hill Wildlife Area and the subsequent partial or full removal of the existing perimeter fence. Fiscal note, no cost to Wood County.
Okay, and a motion by LaFontaine, a second by Han. Is there any discussion on this resolution?
Can I just say?
Yes, Supervisor Roser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So those of us that represent this area in the state legislature have been really trying to work on this. Senator Testan is leading the way to try to come up with some kind of a compromise. DAT cap really is kind of in charge of this. But my suggestion would be for the latest thing to call Senator Testan's office because, and then this happens to be in Representative Vandemir's district. So I know both of them are really trying to work. The last time I talked with Senator Testan's staff, they weren't real hopeful that a resolution was going to happen that was going to make us happy. And so I would encourage you to get on the phone and, and call. Because I don't know, but this is, this is a tough one, and they're not real happy with DAT cap and DNR's movement in this. So we do need to keep the pressure on to see if we can keep that fence up and keep them from shooting all those deer. Okay, thanks.
Supervisor Clendenning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, Vandemir, yes, is definitely wants to talk about this to the different towns association, but we haven't had one due to cancellations. So our next meeting is going to be with Arbordale, the town of Arbordale, and it's going to be at a place there, I believe, at Church in Abbottan. It's been postponed to, to January. And there, I'd, I'd like to see this resolution pass, of course. But there is where the towns are really getting together in Wood County and are for keeping this fence up. So I would hope people would go for this, thank you.
Need further discussion? All right, all in favor of the resolution, signify by aye.
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 And opposed?
Aye.
Try that again, and opposed? All right, that resolution passes unanimously. Moving forward in your packet, Property Information Technology Committee Minutes from Tuesday, November 8th, on 240. The PIP Committee's Minutes of December 6th on 241, 242, and 243. An update from the Department, beginning on 244, and it runs through page 246. An update from the Facilities Manager, Ruben Bentezal, on 247. We have various Minutes from the Memorial Library, their Board of Trustees, some of their committees, beginning on 248, they run all the way through 255. 248 to 255, Mr. Clendenning, Supervisor Clendenning, if you want to add anything, you've been to a lot of those meetings. Had a lot of them, everything in there? Okay. Moving forward, the South Central Library System Board of Trustees, their Minutes on 256, 7, and 8. University Commission, their monthly update on 259 and 260. Then we have Minutes of the Jail Construction Ad-Hoc Committee, November 9th, on 261. And at this point, I think I'm going to move over to the Sheriff's update, say these last two resolutions, to the Sheriff's update on the jail construction project. Sean, are you handling that, or Q, or did you team up on this? I see Quinn's pointing to the sheriff. Ants are looking.
We're going to try to get this stuff up on this, oh, we did, wow, it worked.
Well, not that, but.
Ching, 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 ching.
Everybody get the email I sent out on Friday? Okay. Any questions at any time, let me know. You want to come and take a look at the inside of the facility, it's coming together really well. I can show you those plans. I don't want those out electronically, just for the safety and security of the, of the new facility. But things are coming together really well. But again, any questions at any point that you might have at any part of this project, please let me know and come down and, and take a look at what the proposed plans are. We're hoping early January to get some cost estimates. That's what our project manager had mentioned, Kirk Bernier. So we should start to get at least that information coming in relatively soon. But any questions at all? Anything? We've been working with Lieutenant Peterson, our Security Services Lieutenant. As you can see, the front entrance of the atrium, that'll probably change a little bit just looking at some security ideas as we, as we talk about that and what's going to be best for the facility. But the open atrium is looking very nice. Again, a couple of things will probably change just as far as the flow in and out of the facility. So there'll be some changes. Also, the green space, looking at that proposal, will be ported over to the City of Wisconsin Rapids. Just showing where, you know, we'll have, you know, vegetation and trees and things landscaping out there. We have to work with Department of Corrections on that. There are some restrictions that they're going to have as well, along with the city. But that's been working out really well with the City of Wisconsin Rapids and, and working with them. So any questions? Supervisor?
Yes, thank you. I, I'm with South Central Library Systems. We're building, building down in Madison for our new headquarters. And it started out at $5 million. And now we just got the news at our last meeting, and it's going to be $6.75 million. Just because the people cannot get the stuff, and so they're raising it. And of course, we got it at 4% interest. But do you, do you see this happening with this going up because people can't, you can't get your goods and stuff like that? Do you see a delay or?
It's possible. You know, that's something that, you know, talking with the project manager, it's a possibility. Material costs right now are high. So I think it'll, you know, it's hard to answer that exactly. I can tell you with what that project that you just mentioned is, is kind of in customary with other projects that are similar. Trump Low County, they're a little bit ahead of us as far as building a facility like what we are. That came in a little bit higher as well as far as some cost estimates. So I guess the fairest way to answer that, it's a possibility. Right now, materials are hard to get, and the price is up right now. It fluctuates, but we'll see in the next couple of weeks with what that cost comes in at. It fluctuates, but we'll see, um, you know, the next couple of weeks with what that cost comes in at.
Mayber cost also.
Pardon me?
I say a mayber cost also is a fact.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, well, if anything comes up at any point, please give me a call, and you want to come and take a look at the plans or, or anything. Uh, but things are coming together really well. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. All right, we have two more resolutions in the packet here. Uh, the first one on two sixty-two. Uh, and this is in regard to the years of service, twenty-five years of service, you heard, uh, that presentation before for, uh, Singstock. It entertain a motion to adopt this by Supervisor LaFontaine. Second by Supervisor Curry. And Hamilton. And Polk.
Just pick one.
You're killing me here, Smalls, you're killing me. All right. All in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
And that passed unanimously. Uh, we have a final resolution in the packet, and Trent, you want to read that?
This will be Resolution twenty-one dash twelve dash sixteen, relating to the life and public service of Ross Rusty Miltimore.
Somebody had the opportunity to serve, uh, with Ross, um, I, I did attend his memorial service. Uh, his son was also a member of this board and, uh, was extremely grateful that, uh, he was recognized in this respect. So, uh, first thing I do is entertain a motion on this resolution. Just, okay, so Brey, second by Supervisor Hamilton.
Second.
And, I said Brian Hamilton. Um, all in favor, please signify by aye.
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 And I want to show that that passed unanimously, and then I would ask that everyone please stand, uh, for a minute in respect for Supervisor Miltimore's pass. Thank you. Been to too many of those in this last year or two where we, we've lost some of our former board supervisors, and as we've moved through the packet, uh, just going to make a quick comment here. It, it really makes you, I had this conversation the other day down in Mass, but this is a time of year, this holiday season, where you tend to reflect, you look back, you, um, you probably take stock of where you've been this year, what you've done, uh, personally, as a group. And the one thing that, you know, we try to challenge everybody to do is to make a difference in somebody's life. And I think every member of this board has a head start in that respect, just in what you do in public service. But there's also those personal things to do, and, and I heard, uh, it was a pretty good quote, I'm stealing it a little bit from somebody else the other day, and this is a paraphrase, but it said, you know, this time of year, we always look around, what do, what do we give somebody? You know, during these holiday seasons, what do we give them? And, and they said, you know, the most important thing you can do is give them your time. So whether that be with your family, whether that be at those shelters, uh, whether it be at, you know, Women and Infant Center, the Hannah Center, I could go on and on and on. Uh, I would encourage the public out there, I would encourage members of our board, uh, to continue in any way they can during this holiday season to, uh, make an effort to continue to make this, uh, next year a better year. We've dealt with some real challenges the past two years, uh, with COVID, some of the other things that have come forth. But anyway, on a happy note, I want to wish all of you a happy holiday season and Merry Christmas. Um, and is there anything else to come before the board? Anything else? Then I would declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas, everyone, Happy New Year.